From our closed session. We're going to reconvene the meeting and the. Madam Mayor, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You can all stand to me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Selena. With that, we'll move back from closed session announcements. Mr. City Attorney, are there any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, before you get started, the council's video is not showing.
Okay, staff, will you turn on the council video?
Thank you.
We are now on, council member, can you see us?
Yes, thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to proclamations and presentations. This is proclaiming April DMV Donate Life Month.
How many reports from closed session?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Great, city council many closed session on two items, describing the agenda, received direction, but nor reportable actions were taken. Also do want to report that Councilor Beeman has seen that was able to join us for part of the closed session.
We will now move on to. Our proclamations and presentations, this is proclaiming April as DMV Donation Life Month. Is that you, Selena?
I know, sir. I believe that's Maritza.
Is there a representative for DMV?
Hi, I'm Kayla. I'm the ambassador for One Legacy.
Kayla, welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry, leaving from the library, but I actually graduated from Cathedral City High School. So I lived in the Coachella Valley for, oh, about eight years. My dad's been out there about 20. So I'm very excited to have this opportunity to speak with you guys. I'm a donor mom, so my son Xavier, he passed away in 2009 when he was 13 months. Someone that I trusted to watch him while I was at work hurt him, and he suffered a traumatic brain injury, sorry, that he didn't recover from. So through all of everything that we went through, we were approached by One Legacy about donation, which for a mom, that's not something that you ever think that you'll, they have to think about regarding your own children. But it felt right for us at the time, and we said yes, and our son was able to save five other children. He was able to donate his heart, his kidneys, liver, pancreas, and part of his small intestine. So those five other families got to take their children home and got to spend more time with them, which I'm grateful for. We actually got in touch with his heart recipient a few years ago. He spent the first 10 years of his life in the hospital, I mean, not 10 years, sorry, 10 months, and his parents live three hours away, so it was hard to get there every day to visit with him. But because we were able to say yes and open up our hearts and give the gift of donation, they were able to get 10 years with him. He's going to be turning 11 this year, actually. So that's, I mean, that was gift enough for me to be able to see him thrive, to continue living even in our sadness. And that's, oh, also that we usually have a walk at the end of April, but this year we've had to move it due to COVID. So it will be June 4th, the Donate Life Run Walk. And if you guys are free, we would love to invite anyone willing to come and participate. It's a 5K and 1K Family Festival. It's a lot of fun. There's a lot of different aspects of donation. You get to see donor families, recipients, the living donors. So that's something, if you guys are interested, that we can definitely set up. And that's all. Thank you for having me. Thank you for inviting me, and thank you guys for listening.
Thank you for being here, and thank you and your family for making that very, very, just a lifesaving decision that you made. And in a very difficult time, you helped out a lot of other families. We do have a proclamation, and I will read a couple of wheres. Is this whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ eye and tissue donor when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles? And whereas California residents can sign up to donate life, California Donor Registry online at donatelifecalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, donavidaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donations may visit livingdonationscalifornia.org. Now therefore be resolved that a recognition of the National Donate Life Month on month of April 22nd, 2002, it is hereby proclaimed DMV Donation Month. And so I wanted to just read that out loud for you, for you, Kayla, and we will be sending you this proclamation, and we thank you for being here with us virtually at our city council meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number 3A. This is a Salt and Sea Restoration. Madam Mayor, Selena, welcome.
Can we get the mic a little closer to her so that we can hear you, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Well, I come to you again with a request in this coming week or at your next regular meeting, we will present what we would like to have the city council consider, which is another resolution for the restoration of the Salton Sea. At this time, because of what we call now climate change, we have an emergency on hand, a true emergency. The largest body of water, inland body of water in the state of California, is rapidly evaporating. And because it is evaporating, what is remaining is very toxic. And what rests at the floor of the Salton Sea is very toxic, and it's being exposed. To date, no plan has been approved to restore the Salton Sea. And the restoration is not for amateurs. It is a scientific solution that is required. It cannot be done otherwise. But we must think that the decision that we make for the restoration of the sea must be as soon as possible. We must take advantage of Governor Newsom's declaration that there are a certain amount of funds available for water quality control in the state of California. We propose, we, the Salton Sea Coalition, of which I am a part, propose that we bring in water from the Sea of Cortez. To restore the sea, we need to increase the volume of water in that basin. It's not going to do any good to pour gravel, ring rocks, or any other ideas that will not control the emissions from a shrinking body of water. So we must increase the volume, and in order to do so, we must bring water from the Sea of Cortez. It is not an impossible proposal. If we stop to think what we have right now, the Metropolitan Water District in Los Angeles gets water from Colorado River. The aqueduct was built when I was in diapers. It's still functioning and taking water into Los Angeles. Okay? So aqueducts have been built since time immemorial on the planet's history. So then we propose to bring water in via an aqueduct from the Sea of Cortez to the Salton Sea to increase the volume and cover all of the exposed bed that is now exposed. And in so doing, we would then protect the health of all of us, all of us today and in the future. And in so doing, also, we would protect the economic development of that area. That area is a gold mine, I declare. It is because there's a proposal right now for a lithium mine or lithium mines. It's a whole different story. But the water is most important. But we must negotiate with Mexico. We cannot invade Mexico, invade the Sea of Cortez and start pumping water to the Salton Sea. That will never happen. And in order to do so, Mayor Hernandez, I personally am appealing to you as mayor of the City of Coachella to then work with other governmental agencies that can come together and approach Ponagua in Mexico. They are the department of the Mexican government who have control of all matters of water in the entire country, Ponagua. And it can be done. We, all that takes is scientific diplomacy. We can do it. And so I am appealing in that way as a private citizen and as a member of the Salton Sea Coalition, and I have left packets for all of the city council members, if you would please see to it that they receive them.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much for your time. And I believe that'll be on the next agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Dr. Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we move forward, we do have an email that came in regards to this presentation as well. It did exceed the 250-word limit, and it came from Susan St. Louis. We received it April 26 at 1:00 p.m., and that was forwarded to all of council along with the five additional documents.
Thank you. We are in receipt. We'll move on now to item number four. This is, Dr. Martin, just for clarity, we did donate life month already, but you also added another donate life proclamation, or is that, was that the duplicate?
That was the same one.
Same one, so we're good. So then their next presentation is transformative climate communities program, round four implementation grant overview. Selena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Selena Jimenez, grant manager. Tonight's presentation is an overview of the Transformative Climate Communities Program, or TCC for short, Round Four Implementation Grant. The TCC program is administered by the California Strategic Growth Council in partnership with the California Department of Conservation. The TCC was established by Assembly Bill 2722 in 2016 to do three things: fund the development and implementation of neighborhood-level transformative climate community plans, and with multiple coordinated GHG-reducing projects that provide economic, environmental, and health benefits to the state's most disadvantaged communities. The Transformative Climate Communities Program is essentially a community-led transformation program that empowers the communities that are most impacted by pollution to choose their own goals, strategies, and projects to enact transformational change. And so the approaches will include like a face-based approach that is community-scale climate action with broad implications. It will feature integrated strategies and projects that implement neighborhood-level transformative plans. It will also feature transformative elements that will be multiple coordinated projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And then the program will also develop partnerships that promote local economic, environmental, and health benefits to disadvantaged communities. The program framework, TCC funds climate resilience projects from a menu of project types, such as affordable housing and sustainable housing development, residential weatherization and solar projects, water energy efficiency installations, food waste prevention and rescue, urban greening projects, health and well-being projects, transit stations and facilities, electric buses, van pools, car and bicycle share programs, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and it also ensures that a comprehensive, that there are comprehensive community benefits through three transformative plans: a community engagement plan, a workforce development plan, and a displacement avoidance plan. TCC has, in the past, in the past three rounds, have awarded the following planning grants. And as you can see here, they've been, been awarding different planning grants across the state, and the color-coded colors tell you which round, who got money, and what round, and it looks, it looks like in round three, or pardon me, round two, City of Indio was a planning grant grantee, and then Coachella Valley was a grantee through Sebag. In the last round, here's the overview of the implementation grants that were awarded in the various rounds. City of Riverside was one recipient, and so was the City of Ontario. In round four, there are $115 million for TCC implementation grants. The TCC intends to award three awards for $35 million each. The City of Coachella will be submitting an application for probably $35 million. This is the timeline, timeline for round four, and we just finished submitting a pre-proposal on April 22nd, and our final application submission deadline is July 1st of this year, with October being the month where the Strategic Growth Council might tentatively make a decision and make award notifications. Applicant eligibility, lead applicants and co-applicants will develop a collaborative stakeholder structure that includes residents and community-nominated members, such as community-based organizations. And so the basic structure will be this. So it'll be the Strategic Growth Council and the City of Coachella, who will be the lead applicant, that are going to be governed by the TCC grant agreement. And then we'll have other partners or co-applicants that will be governed by a partnership agreement with the City of Coachella. And these partnership agreements will define financial and liability type of rules. And, and so that is why we would have a partnership agreement with their co-applicants. The TCC program framework basically looks like this. It has three program objectives: a greenhouse gas reduction objective, public health and environmental benefits, and economic opportunity and shared prosperity. And then this trickles down into a vision statement. And then the applicant proposal will be comprised of various strategies and, and then various projects. And all of these will be tied into our transformative elements that include community engagement, displacement avoidance, workforce development, indicator tracking, and then climate adaptation and resiliency. This is Coachella's draft TCC program framework. Please note that we are still working very hard in solidifying partnerships. This is definitely not the end or fully confirmed, but so we would have the City of Coachella and these various partners. So we have Chelsea Investment Corporation, who would offer up, you know, affordable housing. We have potentially Sunline Transit Agency for bus purchases and transit hub items. Then we have the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce offering workforce development and training. We have KDI or Concrete Design Initiative, providing the feasibility study for the old city hall building and all that good stuff, grid alternatives, potentially looking at a microgrid and. Grid alternatives, potentially looking at a micro grid and and maybe solar alternative. Leap Institute and the Green Dysettes offering electric bikes, electric vehicle and ride share programs. We have the Urban Youth Conservation Corps who would serve as stewards of, you know, the environment. And also they would participate, participate in the workforce development and training initiative. Possibly the County of Riverside offering financial capability or other type of supportive programming. And Desert Recreation District helping us deliver our wellness and recreation elements. The project area map is approximately five square miles and we defined our project area. To be within this circle, yeah, because this would be the most. Align with the grant objectives of serving the most disadvantaged communities. All of those census tracts that actually have high poverty rates and other. You know, difficult, I guess, outcomes, life outcomes. And so so this is the best, the team synthesized this project area in various ways. To best fit the grant goals and strategies, so this is the project area. And so the City of Coachella's T C C draft program framework. Will establish partnerships and a governance structure to ensure meaningful community engagement and accountability. This entire grant is very much community led and community engagement is a, is a big part of the. Will be a big part of the successful grant application. The proposed projects have the potential to leverage and expand a model for community health. So we're very excited about that. The city's transformative strategy will include a workforce training and development initiative to support workers. Small businesses and local entrepreneurs. And community engagement efforts will result in a more climate resilient Coachella. A community driven plan and an initiative to transform a five square mile area of Coachella's downtown Pueblo Viejo District. Through a suite of projects and plans that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. While also providing local environmental health and economic co benefits. The city has been a very fortunate recipient of the technical assistance that is being offered. Estolano Advisors and Enterprise Community Partners will be advising the city, helping us. To meet the mandatory threshold review, direct application assistance, they'll provide capacity building. They will, they can also provide us with developing an overall vision that meets the Strategic Growth Council's vision. Partnership, selecting application components and then greenhouse gas calculations. They actually have one of the best greenhouse gas calculations person that we previously worked with through the A H S B. Grant. And this concludes the presentation, thank you so much. If you have any questions or comments, please let me know.
Well, Selena, that's pretty awesome, council.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Selena, for breaking it all down for us. Great job and great job to staff for putting this together. I know that's very time consuming and it takes the entire. Or all of the executives to collaborate and partnership or to partner with Selena. And so I do thank you guys all for your work and dedication.
Thank you.
Yeah, way to go, Selena. I don't have any comments either, just wanted to thank you for putting this together and taking charge and thanks all staff.
Thank you.
I I do have some questions and we're eligible for the implementation portion of the T C C grant. Because the city about five years ago applied for the planning grant and got us there. And so back then, the city was not eligible for the implementation grant, which was really ironic. But like, why did you give us a planning grant if we weren't going to be eligible for the implementation dollars? But that got fixed and one of the areas of contention was the. The criteria in which they grade a community by being disadvantaged. But then also kind of the air quality elements. And do we know if that got cleaned up, Selena, where Coachella is going to be able to score? Or or we're not going to get discounted because we're somewhat of a rural community? And and our rural community is now really at the forefront of getting these dollars? Or what do you know so far?
Yes, actually, they did clean all that up, they provided further, you know, other databases that we can kind of. If I could say ascertain our position, so now they have a heat, a heat index that. That kind of accounts for all the different heat, heat related like strokes. Or, you know, awful incidents where people had to check into the urgent care or what have you because they suffered a heat event. Due to the high heat index. And also we have the A B fifteen fifty measure, Cal and buyer screen four point O. And if you guys recall the map that I just showed you. Staff worked very hard in making sure that we fit all of that criteria. And that are, you know, that we're still being really strategic about applying the funds towards the areas that. That needed the most, but but yet we are still in keeping with all of the different. You know, disadvantaged community criteria and so that was the the best rendition. So I worked with staff like very, very hard in developing that, that was probably one of the toughest. Things to kind of develop because you want to make sure that all your integrative transformative strategies. Are within that, but yet they score very well. So. It, yes.
So last time around, the city actually put money forward, we put about a hundred K to close the gap. The participants in this was due to, they were the lead to Coachella Valley Association of Governments as well. And then Leadership Council was also part of the public outreach that went out. I'm wondering, as I look at the, the, the list of folks that you have underneath of you. Why isn't Leadership Council as part of this effort? Why aren't they part of this and have you reached out to them? And then I'm just very kind of curious with respect to. The nonprofits that you have, like I'm thinking in the city, the city hall has now become a nonprofit hub. Why aren't more nonprofits part of that coalition that we're wanting to integrate in? And what's the rationale? And why did we choose these nonprofits and these businesses versus others?
Yeah, so past community engagements have, you know, just based on feedback that the community has given. The nonprofits that are listed, I listed them as co applicants. And so because we're not finished with our community engagement effort. There is still time to possibly integrate other nonprofits. But basically every nonprofit partner that we choose will have to have the financial capability. Because they will be leveraging some of their funds against our ass. And so it's not just. But, you know, just us haphazardly selecting people, we actually talked to a myriad of people. But also, we intend to engage additional stakeholders. And because we have not completed the community engagement process. And so we will be working very hard in the month of May in, in, you know. Conducting those outreach efforts and having these important conversations with other community based organizations and stakeholders.
Yeah, I think that's just going to be an important point, the more community based organizations we can have and particularly the ones that we house here at City Hall. To be a partner with us in trying to get these, you know, I see Conquise on there, which is great because they do have an office here. Which is great, but I, but I know. Their COFAM just recently brought in, there's an arm now of COFAM. That is working to do kind of just environmental restoration. And working to like create these, these links in the community, so they would be a great partner as well. So if you need any assistance and reaching out to them, I think that'd be great. And I see Madam Mayor is probably saying the Saltin Sea Action Committee would probably want to partner with us too. But but I think the, the more like intersectorally we can think of. I think the the better off we're going to be on this and it's a great opportunity, there's going to be three. I I know there's going to be a lot of people, you got something to say, Madam Mayor?
Your Honor. Our wastewater plant. I was on the city council. When we paid the last fine in the state where I bought the new board seventy thousand dollars. Then we could not negotiate because we had failed to upgrade and modernize the plant, which was dysfunctional. Since then, has the plant been upgraded? Because the increase of your building left and right. Businesses are coming in, so. The plant receives the wastewater from all expansion, including residential development. So it's time to upgrade the wastewater plant and furthermore, we must recycle. That should be the law in the state of California, recycling. This business of the drought, the only, one of the best solutions is recycling of all wastewater. And we can set an example, we can have even a beautiful green park over there.
Right.
For our people, we need to recycle the wastewater, upgrade the plant. To be able to receive the increased volume of wastewater. From all aspects of community development and recycle. That would be the best way of using that plant.
Thank you, I appreciate that suggestion and if we could add a. A treatment, a tertiary treatment or a type two treatment facility to do a recycle pond or treatment, that'd be great. So I I think, you know, just really thinking about all of that, Selena, you know. The more intersectoral collaboration we have, you know, and really kind of strengthening in this, the better off now. Let me just be clear to the council that we're going to be in competition, we're going to be, we're going to be in competition with the City of Indio. Because I know they're going to go for an implementation grant and we're going to be in competition with the county. Because the county is also going to be or trying to go after their, their own grant. So, you know, the, the, I think the best thing we can do is really give ourselves a position or a chance to win and do a good job. And I know we've, we've been winning, but but at the same time, there's, there's three communities in a ten mile span. That are going to go for, for that, you know, thirty five million dollars each, that'd be great if we all got it. But I know a lot of areas throughout the state are going to apply too. So with that, you know, keep us informed and whatever help you need, Selena.
Yes, sir, thank you, I appreciate the support and the guidance, thank you.
Okay, we'll fall on now to written communications, Madam Clerk, are there any written communications? I don't believe there are any written communications. I think we did receive a letter earlier from the Saltin Sea Action Committee that we did read into and put into the file. Move on now to the consent calendars, recommended the consent items be acted upon simultaneously. Unless separate action or discussion is requested by the city council or council members in the audience. What are the wishes of the city council?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the consent calendar, is there a second?
I can.
There's a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries, item number fifteen, I'm going to ask Councilmember Beaman Hasinto to lead this item. As I have a conflict of interest as I own real property, less than ten thousand or less than a thousand square feet from the actions being taken. So I will go ahead and leave the dice and I will give the, the meeting over to Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor, we'll now turn to item number five, which is an item on the new business calendar. To authorize a lease agreement with William Scotsman Incorporated for temporary housing. In the fire station number seventy nine rehabilitation and expansion project, is this your item, Andrew?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Let me pull up my presentation. Is everybody able to see the presentation?
Yeah.
Just thought it's in presenter mode still.
It's not in the full screen slideshow mode.
No, you need to click on it from current slide up right on the top left or from the beginning.
Okay. That's in presentation mode, right? I mean, that's in the.
Andrew, you may need to share your second screen if you have one. Or select that second.
Not have, I do not have two screens.
Yeah, you, you see, you see on the top left where it says from beginning or from current slide that that takes you to full presentation mode. Yeah, click on it.
That's what I'm pushing.
Oh.
Let me see if it will.
Andrew, try, Andrew, try the bottom next to the eighty two percent.
There you go.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your patience. So. As the agenda stated, this is for the fire station rehabilitation expansion project, project F seven. And specifically it is for a Will Scott temporary housing lease. So one of the issues we had on this project is obviously during construction. The fire crew and staff will require fully functional facilities so they can operate with minimal disturbance. And still provide those essential services to the community. So city staff has worked closely with our design team and with CAL FIRE. And with the R C I T, that's the Riverside County Information Technology. They do all of the wiring and communications for the fire station. And we've evaluated many different alternatives. In order to determine what the best way to. House the crew during the construction process. One of the alternatives we had looked at was to relocate the entire crew and staff to a complete other facility. That was eliminated fairly quickly in the process because any. Facilities that would be outside of the downtown Coachella area would be too far away to maintain. Minimal crucial response times to emergencies, so we do need to have that presence in the downtown central Coachella area. So that we can maintain. Safe response times to the community. A second alternative we had looked at was to install a complete temporary fire station. On the adjacent lot, which is just to the west of the fire station. But. That was deemed too expensive and also not as functional for the crew, for the fire crew. Because all of the equipment and tools and a lot of the things they need would be housed in the maintenance apparatus base that they already have. So trying to relocate everything to another site is less convenient and a significant higher cost. So the alternative that we have looked at, alternative number three, is to put temporary housing and office spaces on the existing property. And that way the crew can still utilize the portions of the building that are not being rehabilitated. Because the maintenance apparatus, apparatus bay is not going to be rehabilitated with this project. It's primarily just the, it's entirely the bedrooms and the office spaces that are being. Rehabilitated and expanded. So the alternative we've moved forward with is to try to find housing that will fit an office space. an office space that will fit on the existing property, so they can continue to use that maintenance apparatus bay and provide service to the community. We've, uh, working with CalFire, we contacted many different companies and CalFire actually identified a company, Will Scott, also known as William Scotsman. Um, they were in a unique position to be able to provide us with the temporary facilities that we need. They offer leased facilities, um, and they do fully customizable, uh, and the cost includes a delivery setup, um, and a fully customer customizable unit that can be specifically set up to serve the needs of the crew um, and the office space. Um, so one of the units we'd be looking at would be a, um, bedroom facility for the fire crew, because they do have to have the twenty-four-hour staffing there. Uh, we're looking at a five-bedroom unit that would have laundry facilities, two restrooms, uh, kitchen, dining, um, everything they'd need to have the residential quarters and still operate out of the facility. Uh, there would also be a small office building that would be in the back parking lot. Um, that would be for the fire captain and the fire chief, and that would also provide secure storage for uh, metal equipment or any other, um, uh, secure storage, secure files and things that could be accessible in an area that, uh, is secure. We would also be proposing a third unit, which would be at the front of the fire station um, for office, uh, for the administrative assistant. That unit would be open to the public. Um, it would have a public restroom, that way anyone in the community who wants to come to the fire station and needs to seek any services in the fire station would have that available to them. Um, here's the picture of kind of everything I was just describing. So this is the fire station lot, I've highlighted the fire, um, the existing fire station seventy-nine. Um, the portion that is not highlighted in red, that is the apparatus base. So those will still be functional and we can still use those during construction. The portion that is highlighted in red with the hatch, that's the portion that gets demolished and rebuilt. Um, so that is the area that we need to replace, uh, with temporary quarters during construction. So our proposal is to place the crew quarters immediately adjacent to the apparatus base in the back parking lot area. That gives them fast and efficient access, uh, to all of the equipment so that they can continue with the um, essential services and emergency response needed. There would be a small administrative assistant building in front that would have ADA accessibility and would be, um, open to the public, uh, so that anyone who needs to drop off paperwork or or seek any services there would still have that, uh, public access, and there would also be a small office building in the back. Um, again, that would be for just, um, admin staff and, um, that would be a secure office that would not have public access. The proposal is to have the vacant lot to the west be available to the contractor for his office space and storage yard, and they would also provide some gravel parking there that would be available for the crew of the fire station so that they have a place to park their personal vehicles and maintain the, um, open driveways, uh, so that fire crew can have, uh, quick response times in and out of the facility. So this item is a it is a critical path item, so the project has been on hold until this item was completely identified and and resolved, um, because obviously we we can't break ground, we can't start construction unless we have a clear notion of how we're going to house uh, the crew and how we're going to continue to provide the services to the community while construction is underway. Um, so now that we have gone through all these meetings and we have identified a company that can provide us with the customized housing that is required, um, the updated schedule that we are advancing at this time, um, the project is actually currently out to bid. We began the bid process on April eighteenth, and we have a proposed mandatory pre-bid meeting on May fourth. Um, that's where any prospective bidders who want to look at the project would, uh, do the walkthrough in the fire station and be able to, uh, review the plans with staff. For the award of the project, the plan right now is to do a bid opening that is scheduled for June seventh, that gives the contractors a good four weeks to go over the plans, uh, ask any questions and get response from staff and from our design team. And staff would be coming back to city council for the full authorization of the project. And a potential award to the lowest responsive bidder on June twenty-second. Uh, construction would begin around August first, and the completion would be scheduled for around July of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we are giving them a full twelve months for construction. Uh, mainly because of anticipation of potential, uh, delays in materials, there has been a lot of, um, long lead times, uh, when it comes to getting special, special material, especially when it comes to mechanical equipment and stuff like that. So we are, uh, proposing to give them the full twelve months for the construction schedule. Um, as far as the budget, uh, the total cost for the full customization, delivery, lease, and removal of the three units is estimated at just over a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that is actually a good bit less than what we had anticipated for this item. Um, so this is a, uh, we're happy about this, uh, price item, uh, as far as what we had estimated it to be. Um, the lease is proposed to be funded with the funds that have already been allocated for the fire station seventy-nine project, so no additional allocations to the overall project budget are being requested at this time. The recommendation, as written out in the staff report, is to authorize the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with William Scotsman, Inc. for the fire station seventy-nine rehabilitation and expansion project. If anyone has any questions or comments, I'm happy to, um, to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Andrew, councilmembers.
No questions, uh, excited to get started.
Councilmember Delgado, I can't see you very well, do you have any questions?
So, so the the length of time for the renovation is is about six months, and then we're giving them an additional six months, just in case there's delays for materials for construction?
Um, the, per the contract specs, the length of construction is listed at twelve months. So.
And then, so you don't think that there will be any delays or that there will be additional time that's needed outside the twelve months?
Um, that's handled in the, in the specifications, so if um, if they have reasonable delays that, uh, they have to file for uh, change of working days, if there was something, um, that would be approved through staff, if there was something that was required to go beyond twelve months. Uh, at this time, we do not anticipate a, uh, remodel project to take longer than twelve months. But, uh, there are, um, uh, if they extend past the twelve months and they don't have reasonable justification for that extension, then there would be liquidated damages that would be applied to the contractor, um, which is, uh, pretty standard in in contract language and specifications. Um, so they are required to finish within twelve months, or they would be assessed liquidated damages if they did not have, uh, reasonable and pre-approved authorization for that delay.
And then obviously our firefighters would be, they're more comfortable staying there, right? In the temporary housing than going elsewhere.
Um, yes, this was, uh, we worked very closely with the fire, with the fire staff on hand, as well as with CalFire, um, and with RCIT to determine what worked best for them. Um, one of the reasons we wanted to go about the process this way so that we could get, uh, you know, maximum input from the actual fire staff so that we could make sure that whatever housing option we chose for them was what worked best for them and worked best for their ability to, um, respond to the community with the emergency services. So having, having the housing and the office right there in the parking lot immediately adjacent to the equipment that they need um, was the alternative that that they had selected as the most efficient al- alternative for them to keep operations at the maximum level.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew, could you take that presentation down?
Yes.
For the public who's viewing. Um, thanks for all that information, the only question I had, and it could be that I missed it because I had some background noise here, but, um, I'm assuming that these funds are coming out of the funds that we already allocated to this project and it's not an additional cost, right?
Yes, um, so the.
Okay. That's the easiest way to answer, perfect. Uh, okay, any other questions or comments from council? Okay, do we have, uh, a motion? All second. Clerk?
I'll be doing the roll call. Councilmember Galapsa?
Aye.
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto?
Yes.
And then, uh, Councilmember Delgado?
Aye.
Can we have a staff person bring back the mayor to the dais?
All right, we'll move on now to item number sixteen, this is provide direction for the park user fee. Uh, Maritza here, present.
Good evening, I'm your mayor and members of the council, this item is returning back to you after some dialogue that we had about a month ago with regards to evaluation of, uh, reducing the park user fee, uh, potentially up to a zero use fee. Um, give me one second, while the presentation loads. We have had an opportunity to take this to the Parks Commission, as well as staff did also have dialogue with each of the leagues, with the exception of the junior raiders who were not available. Uh, but with the conversations that we had with our leagues, they were all, um, of the four that we spoke with, um, all three of the four identified that they would be supportive of the intention if the fee was reduced to also reduce their fee correspondently. One identified that they would not be able to reduce their fee, that they are looking at possibly increasing their fee due to increases in their operation and would, um, without a reduction, but be looking to increase, uh, their rates, their registration rate. Um, so just kind of, uh, some background overview is these are our current fee schedules for different park uses at the park. Currently, the yellow are, um, the rates for the sports leagues, and those are currently at fifty percent. So for the public, the, um, for anyone else, I should say, for other, anyone else renting fields, uh, those rates are double that rate currently. Um, otherwise, park usage is at thirty-one dollars and fifty cents per hour. The state reservation at Veterans Park is at one eighty-seven. A sport field permit is four dollars for the sports leagues, eight dollars on the standard, uh, permit. For sports leagues, lighting in addition to the field is nine dollars per hour, and sports lighting for non-sport league permit is eighteen dollars per hour per field. Sports diamond prep is a hundred ninety-four dollars, and snack bar is a hundred and eighty-seven per season, per league. Um, just some background, the council has seen this before, this is how we kind of score in the sense of with regards to comparable rates in the valley for other sports leagues in other cities or, uh, rates by other agencies. You can see that we're very competitive in that we are basically, um, the least expensive at four dollars per hour and nine dollars per hour for sports field lighting. The council had mentioned looking at the use with regards to our sports leagues in the last almost three years and take an average of what their regular use is. Um, so we broke it down, um, by each league, um, fo- football, because their leagues are very both leagues use it at the same time, we we have one slide for them, but I'm gonna go through each one, so this is CISA's use at Bagduma Park during their regular season, which is November through July. You could see that they're on there on Sundays and mornings and in the evenings, Saturdays morning, evenings, and then the entire week in the evenings. Um, Coachella Valley Soccer League, which is our other soccer league during the regular season, very similar schedule at Las Flores though, so they are on their, uh, Saturdays, the the entire week in the evenings and then mornings. Baseball, um, they primarily are on the Monday through Friday during their season, February to May. Football, our football leagues are on, um, the two different parks, various, uh, mirrored schedules Monday through Friday in the evenings, about two hours each night, two, three hours. And, um, on Saturdays, the Raiders do use, uh, the Las Flores Park for some of their home games. And so in evaluating, um, what it would look like if there was a no-fee permit, we would request that there be a deposit-based permit for fields, um, recommending it be a hundred dollars per field for deposits that would ensure that the permittee, um, does not leave the field, uh, with significant trash and that the netting is returning good condition. Uh, the league permits, we would recommend that per season, each league be required to pay a thousand dollars for their season deposit that would be returned at the end of the season. Um, the second thing that we considered, um, when we were evaluating what a zero-fee permit, um, concerns may arise, would be ensuring that non-sport league members of the public would be able to be identified a specified space that they could pull a permit for. Um, as you saw previously, there is a lot of use during the seasons for the different sports leagues. I want to ensure a space for public, non-league-related activity. We identified after conversing with all of our leagues that at Bagduma Park, field four could be set aside during seasons um, for Fridays all day, Saturdays and Sundays after two P M. So that field will never be rented, um, if this is what the council directs, uh, would remain a public-use field, would not be rented to any league activity and would be rented at two hours, uh, increments for individual or family-type rentals. Uh, Rantolos Flores, field one would be set aside similarly one day during the week, Wednesdays and Saturdays and Sundays in the afternoon after two. Um, the community field use program would remain as it has been approved and would not be changed. And the recommendations before the council on this item, uh, before I get to the recommendations, I just wanted to, uh, quickly note that this did go before the Parks Commission, the Parks Commission did dialogue on this, but we're not able to identify a motion that there was consensus to move forward. They showed support for both one and four of the recommendations listed here, and we're kind of, um, just almost tied in in how to proceed, so there was no definitive motion that survived. Um, they, so the recommendations before the council this evening are recommend the park fee remaining as it is, recommend the park fee schedule to reflect that all park rentals would be fifty percent and the not, a non-resident fee be at the full rate. Uh, recommend reducing a park fee schedule to reflect another fee percentage. And number four is recommend reducing park fee schedule to reflect the zero-fee permit and include the public reservation fields identified. And with that, that does conclude my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions by the council.
Okay, thank you, yeah, we did send it to the Parks Committee to try to get some more action, it looks like they did not have any, uh, action or couldn't come up with the resolution. Uh, council, what are your wishes?
I, uh, was reading the, uh, staff report on this item and, um, very supportive still to remove all fees, I'm just torn by the fact that one of the four uh, uh, organizations is not able to, um, reduce their fees. And, uh, you know, this item came from the mayor's direction, and so now, um, there's even an idea that they'll increase fees for our residents if we're not able to reduce it to zero, um, which is, I don't know, and, uh, it doesn't sit well with me. And, uh, I'd rather, you know, be able to vote to reduce the fees and be certain that each organization, we just need one more to agree to reduce the fees for our residents, um, given that you know, with the same, uh, you know, we're living s- same times, and three of the four are able to and willing to, um, reduce the fees and one uh, is not, then, you know, I'm not sure, um, what's, you know, difference in their management of the, uh, of their funds and all, but, uh, would, would, I I'd feel very comfortable. Would, I'd feel very comfortable moving forward and reducing it to zero. If, if I, if I knew all four, but it's only the soccer league that's not willing, so. I don't know. That's where I'm at right now.
Even if we reduce it to zero, they're still going to increase because their costs are going up.
They identified that if we reduce it to zero, they would not increase, but if without a reduction, they have seen some increased operational costs. So they were looking currently at increasing it for their next season.
So in terms of keeping, well, it's not a reduction, it's keeping costs flat. That's still a win for the community. And then the other leagues in turn would keep their, they would reduce. I think that's still a win. You know, I, we put this forward just frankly, and I, and I know staff's position, you know, I mean. Anytime we, we take a little bit of dollars away from our general fund and, and you know, it's good, we're gonna have to cover it. And but I, I, I think that, you know, the reason I'm putting this is a couple of reasons. One. Inflation, cost of goods, gasoline, cost of rent, groceries, et cetera is going up. The other thing is, is that our sports leagues have traditionally been, done a great job in helping us to combat crime. You know, they've done it just a really, really good, keeping kids involved, keeping them. You know, active, keeping them, you know, tired. So when they go home, they eat, they do their homework and then they go to bed. You know, and, and, and the other side of it is that financially, right now, you know, you look at our last budget, we, you know. We put one point seven, you know, away and I think the total impact was like thirty K. On what this was going to do for our budget. So I think the thirty K investment is a good investment and so I'm, I'm of the notion that we, we, we. Take it to zero and then we monitor as needed and, and we're not eliminating the fee. We're just saying that for the time period. It'll be zero and if we need to adjust, we'll go from there, you know, but, but that's, that's where I'm at. And then if keeping prices, prices flat, not a bad thing too.
I have a question. If Councilmember Delgado was not trying to speak, I don't know if I heard that.
No, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Maritza, looking at the numbers. And I could have missed it in the staff report, but I'm seeing the numbers like on a per hour basis. Can you give us a sense of what a sports league pays for those fees currently? And how, and you know, I guess we could calculate for ourselves how that will be impacted if we change the fees.
It varies from each league. I want to say that football is probably paying us around. It's less than three thousand for football. Baseball will probably be around forty five hundred. And the soccer leagues are making up a good amount. It's actually a little bit more mayor. In total for field use that we get a year is like closer to seventy five. But we do, we have seen a significant increase in field use, especially as we. I, I know that the sports leagues have grown the adult rec at the program. So that's great to see everyone out there, but there has been increased use. So I think we're seeing at close to each of those leagues, probably around twenty ish thousand. I can't, off, off the cuff, I can't split it off between youth and adult for each league, but I know that they're paying around twenty thousand, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so that's what the savings will be for those leagues if we move forward with the fees. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a substantial savings. Yeah, I hope that some of that benefit will be passed on to our residents and I'll just reiterate what I've said in the past. You know, we are already. At much lower costs, both in terms of the field costs to the leagues and also the fees that are being charged to residents are much lower than any jurisdiction in the valley. So I'm happy about that. To the extent that we can make it even lower, that's great. But also I just want to ensure that we don't get too far in this business that we've been in in the past of sort of almost attempting to manage the leagues. At the end of the day, if, if one, if one league keeps its fee higher than the others or even increases their fee. You know, that maybe that those players and those families will move to the other league or find some other solution. But I don't think we should be mandating what they should do. I hope that they will pass it on to, to the residents.
I agree and it's not like we have an agreement with any of the leagues, so they have intention to reduce it, but they are not required to. And so, you know, we're just keeping that in mind, but I agree with Councilmember Beaman Hasinto. I mean, we can't, you know, we can't have them reduce it. We, we hope that they do. But then I'm sure that there is cost that they're gaining as well. And it seems like CISA has identified some. And they are the league that has the most players registered. So having said that, I'll, and then of course with, also if we need to make changes in the future, we need to identify or. Add in some costs again, you know, then we'll evaluate again. But having said that, I'll move to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a statement. It's okay. As if, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the council and to the residents of the city. The staff would recommend option one, even the fees the same as indicated, they only bring about seventy five thousand a year. But that's not even cost recovering the current cost of maintaining those fields and our costs are going up. Materials are going up, water is going up, everything's going up. So they do have the best rates in the, in the valley. We're proud of that. However, we feel that and we cannot guarantee that the cost savings they receive from us will be trickled down to the residents. So as, you know, just as your administrator of finance, as your administrator, we, we recommend option one, but however, we leave that decision to the city council.
Yeah, and again, I just want to reiterate, I feel comfortable. And I don't know if, I know Carlos, we had asked you, and we talked about this, but I'd feel comfortable moving forward with the zero fee. Understanding that it's going to support our residents. If it's not, then, then, then I don't know why I would support reducing the zero. If it's not gonna make sure that the people that, that I report to are, are the residents, I want to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we're doing this for that purpose. And so that, that's, that's how I feel too. And so unless all four agree, then I don't, you know, it just makes me, you know, we could bring it back and. You know, maybe their board of directors could vote, you know, they're, they're nonprofits and they have a board. And I don't know if their boards have had the time to make the decision whether or not to set a twenty plus thousand dollar savings. In exchange and, and support and some creating that, passing on that savings toward their, to their. To their players and to the residents, you know, that's, that's, that's my thought too.
Yeah, and Councilmember, that's, that's a good point. I mean, if, if, you know, the city was managing its leagues and if the city was running the parking racks, then we could obviously. You know, make that possible, but our, but our structure here is we, we contract with or we allow nonprofits. To run our, you know, soccer program, et cetera, use our fields. And, and I think the only thing, the only mechanism we have is, is just public pressure. And but there isn't a legal binding, there isn't a legal manner in which we can force them to pass the cost off because they have their own boards and frankly. I, I'm of the opinion that we don't want to do that. I don't, I don't want to be in that business. The city, I mean, we got enough to do and telling the board what to do. And I think we tried it like three, four, five years ago, didn't necessarily go well, but so. I think we're, we are where we're at. Now, one thing you did say that is concerning, Maritza, and, and. You said that you're seeing more adult activity. And one of the things that I had mentioned to you is that if we move, of course, if we do this and we make this move. We wanted to make sure that all of a sudden this wasn't like, oh, we got free play, let's take all the field use. And what we wanted to do was create an average of their field use and ensure that that average was maintained. And that this wasn't some attempt now to like increase that average and to increase the field play and to make, you know, the use on our sports, on our, on our actual fields more. You know, because we do want to maintain and keep a quality of, of, of the fields that we have. And so that's, that's where I, I'm, I'm just going to look to you and saying, hey, have things changed in terms of what they've used? And, and what are we going to do to ensure that it doesn't get abused now?
So, and that's my comment to that mayor was the item regards to the public field. So that's why we actually set aside a public field that could only be rented by members of the public and not by the sport league.
But I guess my point is, is that if, if a sport leagues, you know, for the last five years has rented five hours of sports use of the fields a day. Now this shouldn't turn into seven hours of sports use per day.
There's no more time. So what I'm saying is they're already like using every field at every, in every hour. If anything, the proposal identified for public set aside actually reduces their access.
There was a question asked by Councilmember Galapza. We did not find any legal prohibition in terms of. As part of the reduction, mandating some sort of reduction of membership. You probably would need to codify that in the M O U agreement. How we monitor that in practice would be a little difficulty, right? How you, because everybody has different membership fees. So from the legal, I think we could do it in terms of practically how you implement, that would be a different question. And we may have a lot of the records, but just wanted to provide a response to the council member on that question.
And if I could add to that simply, just so that the council is aware what that would result in. So the only. Component to the M O U is that the city provides those members of the M O U access to the city's park space. So the only response, should those actions not be conformed with, would be to, basically to pull their permitted access. And that places the city, I think, in a very precarious circumstance where you're kicking off a sport league from the fields.
So I have a couple of comments sort of building from that conversation. One is that, you know, we know how nonprofits operate or they should operate. And to the extent that a nonprofit has twenty thousand dollars extra in a fiscal year, it could also expand services. Or it could, you know, pass the savings on by reducing fees, whatever it is that the nonprofit does. It can't profit from those twenty thousand. So, you know, whatever decisions those leagues make. If they're following the mandates of their nonprofit status, it will either provide additional services or possibly reduce fees for the residents. Should be a net benefit for the residents either way. But I do still have that concern about, you know, attempting to mandate reduction in fees and how we would even enforce that if we did try to. If the concern or the desire here is to reduce residents' fees, maybe we should consider taking that amount of money or a different amount of money and just putting it into. The scholarship fund or, or developing a mechanism where we're giving a certain amount of money to cover the first, you know, X number of fees. For registrants or something like that. And that way you could ensure that it is going to the residents, if that's a major concern. To me, I, I just think, you know, our fees are already so low. It doesn't seem like we're accomplishing what the, the desire is here in terms of trying to, I'm hearing a desire to get lower fees to the residents. To me, it doesn't make sense to move forward on this item right now unless we clarify that on one end or the other. To have some assurance about what this seventy five thousand dollars is going to do for our residents.
Gabriel, is it, are you saying that there is, it's more, the impact is greater than seventy five thousand?
Yeah, the, you know, the, we have to cost recover and that seventy five thousand dollars doesn't recover the maintenance of those fields throughout the year. They are at a reduced rate fifty percent. You know, our costs are going to go up and we're not, they're not kept, they're not, they're not being impacted, you know, rates go up with water, sewer, electric, trash. And their rates haven't gone up and we're, we're absorbing the, the cost of maintenance. They have a real good deal in place. And, you know, we're real proud of our low rates and we would like to keep it that way just to show, just to have the, the control and accountability of maintaining those fields and. You know, we still have to maintain them and on annual basis. And so, you know, I think doing a no fee permit would kind of impact that as well.
I did, I did ask, this is, I, I had, I had asked Nathan to give me those numbers last year. And so for maintenance in two thousand nineteen, it was close to three hundred thousand. And then, of course, it's breaking, it's broken down into supplies, utilities, and then in total, it's. Nine hundred and thirty six thousand, so close to a million, just to put that a little bit more into perspective. You know, I had mentioned that before as well is that, you know, we can't, I don't agree adding it into the M O U. And then I think regulating it is going to be difficult. It's already difficult regulating many things as it is now. And so I did, you know, propose this like Councilmember Beaman Hasinto, is that we take some of those fees. And then put it back into a scholarship fund and then just, you know, take it back so that the. For, for families who are registering their kids can then benefit from it as well. But I, just to make it clear, I don't support adding it into the M O U. You know, I, I, I support moving forward with this, but not adding it to, to the M O U. And then also the, just the type of work that that's going to add to staff as well is going to be a lot of headache. And so either we move forward the way it is or then I support as well as putting it to scholarship.
There is a motion on the floor. I'm a second motion to reduce the fees to zero. Is there any more discussion?
For clarification from the four options, that would be option.
That would be to, to make the fee zero. I think that was Councilmember Delgado made.
Could option four also be a reserves of fields for, for non-league use? Option four?
Correct, yeah, I believe so. So there is a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Galapza?
You know, I, I won't bow down the hill for this one, understanding that, that three of the four leagues will make sure that to reduce their fees. You know, unfortunately, the fourth hasn't, but you know. Understanding too how nonprofits work, we should monitor how the, how each of these organizations use the savings. And then in, 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 and then deciding the following year, if it was of a good purpose and if we decide to, you know, remain at zero. We should let our residents know that we're reducing the fee at zero as well. You know, but being pragmatic and understanding that if, you know, I'm going to, if I go on, you know, saying that I'm going to stay over here. Without it and, you know, going to be losing anyways, so I'll vote yesterday. And see how we can afford on it.
Councilmember Hatzinco?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Hethmanis?
I will move on now to public hearing item. This is public hearing resolution number two thousand twenty two dash forty two. Conducting property owner protest ballot proceedings and resolution number two thousand twenty two dash forty three. Approving the formation of landscaping and lighting district, maintenance district number forty, Mariposa Ponte Track. Thirty two zero seventy four, thirty two zero seventy four dash one, thirty two zero seventy four dash two. L L M D forty confirming the engineer's report and assessment diagram in ordering the levy collection assessment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council again. This item is before you, this public hearing was set on March ninth. And so this is the public hearing regards to Mariposa Point and the corresponding L L M D district that would correspond with that new residential development. The residential development does sit at the corner of Calhoun and Avenue fifty and includes the three tracks. Listed thirty two zero seven four, thirty two zero seven four dash one, thirty two zero seven four dash two. It consists of a total a hundred and fifty five residential properties and ten letter lots. The ten letter lots are basically. The landscape areas and the two retention basin areas included in that ten, those ten letter lots. This is a quick overview of the, the district, the areas that have the blue. I guess tracing on them are the areas that are the retention basins and the landscape perimeter areas. Those would be the areas that correspond to the district. This is an overview of the assessments that correspond to this district for the O and M. It is forty four thousand nine hundred and ninety three. The admin cost is ten thousand sixty eight. The reserve collection that is standard for basically rainy day related items is twenty two thousand four ninety seven. And the total balance would be seventy six and twenty nine dollars. The rate assessment per each of the hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty five homes is four hundred and ninety dollars and fifty two cents. As noted, this was a public hearing set on March ninth and there are two property owners in this district. Both property owners were mailed ballots. And we have received two ballots moving forward. We would be asking mayor and council to follow the next steps to open and close the public hearing. And after the public hearing is closed, direct the city attorney to tabulate the two ballots returned. And once the, the tabulate, once the city attorney has tabulated those results, he would announce them and identify whether a majority protest exists. At that time, the council can take action on resolution two thousand twenty-two forty-two. And if there is not a majority protest as a result of that ballot tabulation, then council will act on two thousand twenty-two dash forty-three, second resolution.
I'm going to open the public hearing at seven thirty-one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item on L M D number forty? See now, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And wait till a minute passes. At seven thirty-two, public hearing is not closed. Mister City Attorney, could you please tabulate the ballots?
Great, thank you, Mayor.
John Roll.
Yes, I have here the, the official assessment ballot. identifies a parcels, the tabulating and weighted according to the financial obligation is six sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight and twelve cents and the vote is in favor, yes, of the assessment. Hopefully the second ballot now. It's been tabulated and weighted according to the financial obligations and in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents and the vote is in favor of the assessment. So yes. Such a majority protest and the city council can move forward with this item.
Okay, it looks like we have ballots in the affirmative to approve the creation of L M D number forty. At this time, I'm going to ask the city council. What are your wishes?
So the first motion would be approved, number twenty-two dash forty-two. This is declaring the results of the election.
Can we get a motion to approve the results?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Well, second.
We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Councilmember Biman Hasinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Hi.
And Mayor Hernandez.
I.
At this point, if you get a motion approving resolution number twenty-two dash forty-three, this is the resolution informing the assessment district.
Can we get a motion to approve dash twenty-two dash forty-three to approve, inform the assessment district? Is there a motion? A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a second, but councilmember Biman Hasinto, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Galarza.
I.
Councilmember Biman Hasinto.
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move forward now on public comments. The public may address the city council board corporation authority on any item of interest. Anyone in the public that'd like to address the city council? Anyone online? We'll move on now to, to city council comments. I'll start to my left, councilmember Delgado.
Yes, there's a few things that I wanted to, to cover in. One is that I'm, I'm seeing that the curbs need to be repainted, like downstairs of Chavez Boulevard around the parks as well as deteriorating curbs and sidewalks. I see that happening quite a bit on Sessa Chavez, but we really need to, you know, maybe, or for, for the staff to take a drive to the city and really, you know, identify, you know, what those curbs and sidewalks that are deteriorating, which ones need to be replaced and then costs to recover those as well. I also want to bring, to, bring for, bring forward to the code enforcement and public safety subcommittee is accountability and maintenance and appearance for commercial buildings. Specifically those that have many tenants. You know, they've, they've, I think they've gotten away with a lot for a very long time and it's, it's long overdue. So I would like to bring that back or bring that forward to the code enforcement, public safety subcommittee meeting to begin those discussions. Additionally, I'm, as everyone has noticed and seen, is the tire marks throughout the city from the race car driving, from the donuts. And I would like to know how much it would cost to remove all those tire marks. There are too many streets for me to share because they're literally throughout the city. And obviously with that is the speeding that continues to happen in the city and the cost that that's costing, not just in having to, you know, remove the, the, the tire marks, but also public safety, which is a very serious issue. And I know that we discussed it in the subcommittee meeting, the public safety. But I would like that to come back soon so that we can continue to discuss it. And then lastly, I think the topic of the moment is Grupo Firme who came out to the city of Coachella. Again, I thank them for coming out. I had a few students who went out there and, and their parents. They were very excited to see Grupo Firme. I think the, the topic or the question was, you know, what did they really contribute directly to the city to earn the key to the city? And so I don't want to confuse recognition with, with gratitude. There are many forms of recognizing folks as well as Grupo Firme. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, the keys to the city. For me, when I think of the keys to the city, it's more of a, of a thank you. You know, it's, it's more of a, you know, thank you for your direct contribution, but it also comes with a great deal of responsibility. And that means, you know, speaking at events, attending groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings and speaking at events. So there's a great deal of responsibility with that as well. And so going forward, I hope that we would be more careful in how we move forward with recognizing people that deserve to be recognized. But also that we're not, that we don't think that we have to necessarily give them the keys to the city for them to come out and, and visit us. And that's it for my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Galarza.
I think we're all excited. We're not going to have a lot of traffic in the next month. It's been a long last few weeks. Is it, you know, I'll, I'll be, you know, brief. Great, you know, and attending, attending the Coachella Valley Economic Forecast and Business Conference hosted by the county of Riverside. You know, one thing that was highlighted for our city in particular was the need for multifamily housing. I know we're, you know, we're, we're, you know, very progressive and have the largest share of affordable housing in the city. You know, just want to advise and see how we can move forward and having more diversity in our, in our housing portfolio to ensure that we be more, you know, the younger folks that are able to purchase a house or an apartment in our city would be ideal in the next few years. And so in the moment, I know we're breaking ground in many other places that are coming at market rate of, you know, rates. And so you know, the more that we could do, you know, the better, but understanding that, you know, our city is a, you know, we've been breaking ground on affordable housing projects, that's a right, and also other market rate apartments. So great work. I just wanted to toss that out. It's been in my mind. Secondly, the, you know, I had a great time attending the Grupo Firme to the city. You know, we had hundreds and hundreds of our residents and neighborhood residents in attendance. I think that, you know, it was a great opportunity for a lot of our folks that didn't attend Coachella Fest to be able to be there and see, see how, you know, see this group that has been making trends and breaking barriers as an inclusive group of a new generation, growing up very humble, representing a lot of, you know, the merits that we have in our city. And so it was a great presentation. You know, great that we included a lot of organizations like Poliak and other young folks that were there to welcome them. And so I had a great time and look forward to continuing doing so. I also want to, you know, state that we, you know, we can obviously continue doing more in recognizing our residents that contribute a lot to our city, but I think it's unfair to state that we don't, you know, we, every December, we welcome folks to the, you know, here, hometown heroes awards. And throughout the year, you know, just in the last few months, you know, we've been able to recognize and bring proclamations for residents. In fact, you know, more recently, I introduced the, you know, rest proclamation for Mr. Lee Espinoza. And so I welcome to my colleagues in the city council that are concerned that not enough residents are being recognized to, you know, ensure that you bring forth these names and these folks that we should be recognizing at city council meetings. Completely agree, we could be doing more of that and in, and, but it takes all of us to make, make that effort. I think it's easy to, to, to crit, to crit, to criticize an action, but with present solutions, we're able to build together as a community and move forward as one. Thank you.
Councilmember Biman Hasito.
I have a couple of things from me, having just seen that Indio's housing element has been approved. It reminded me that I'd like to get an update from staff on the housing element next meeting if possible, or if not individually before next meeting so that we can understand where we are and what's next and when we can expect that to hopefully be approved. Related to that and also somewhat related to some of councilmember Galarza's comments. I have asked on several occasions that we consider an inclusive zoning ordinance, which would require that future developments include at least a certain threshold of affordable housing and can be tweaked to include other types or levels of housing as well to ensure that moving forward, we're developing in a way that reflects the needs of our residents. It hasn't come forward and I haven't really heard any explicit support from the other council members or mayor on this item. So I'm here to ask council members, please consider voicing your support to city managers so that we can get that item in front of us and, and get that implemented as we're finalizing our housing element. Those would be separate items. It's not part of the housing element. On the topic of Grupo Firme, I agree with everything councilmember Delgado said, and I also stated it publicly in a different way. For me, it's not about a lack of recognition for other residents. In my opinion, it wasn't the right entity to recognize because of its absolute lack of investment or connection to the city. And I saw a lot of public support for that position as well. Finally, the last update I have or item of note is that I'll be attending the SCAG, this general assembly on behalf of the city in the coming days. And so I'll be sure to report back about that at next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll start off with Avenue fifty and Sessa Chavez. Gabriel, if you could contact, I'm going to say it used to be like Unical seventy-six and used to be their, their gas station right across the street from Walgreens. There's a big wall right there and, and every time you come into the city off of Avenue fifty, you see this ugly big wall that is the back of their building. Let's contact them and let's see if we can add a mural there. I mean, that's, it's, it's a, it's a wall that's just been, it's right on fifty and Sessa Chavez or Harrison, the Unical seventy-six and it, every once in a while gets graffiti, but we can actually work on improving those things. I want to just lend support to what councilmember Delgado has said regarding just the current conditions of some of the facades as well as the current conditions of some of the signage. And one of the areas in particular is the kind of the taco mark area that, that has the commercial buildings behind it. And one of the areas that I think we need to pay attention to is the CCNRs that they were originally approved with. Some of the landscaping is, is, is rundown, needs to be replaced. We haven't really enforced it. Same, you know, we go to the Walmart shopping center, same thing right there. You go to that shopping center, the CCNRs there looks, it just looks, it looks bad. And that's a mechanism that we have in order to ensure that they're keeping up with the maintenance of those buildings. A lot of these buildings have been paid off. And it's the property owner who is just neglecting to do maintenance, but I, I, I see that on, you know, that area right in there. Because you look at, you know, Food for Less, you look at the CET Center, you look at how that area is approved, but we can really pay attention to that curve and how it comes in. And then we're talking about all the buildings between Sixth Street and Avenue fifty-two. There's a lot of different on, on, on Sessa Chavez as well that, that need some fixing. I will lend support as well to councilmember Biman Hasito's recommendation that we do look at an inclusionary housing policy. We've been trying to do something on, on a lot of our specific plans that includes something like fifteen percent. And, and, you know, I know that we've looked at something, you know, like twenty percent. But if we need to mandate and codify this moving forward, that's something that I think, you know, I can get behind and, and will be very supportive. And councilmember, I'm, I apologize, I'll apologize if that's something that I've missed, but I've, I've been trying to get, you know, everybody's kind of objectives done and inclusionary housing and trying to meet that our housing need is, is above most important. I, I want to just say something to Selena and as well as to just all, all of the team. Gabe, and, and we've been doing a good job of building affordable housing. We have, you know, we, on Friday, we break ground on the Dolores Huerta apartments. So your chalk development is going down there in Coachelita and then we'll be coming back to Tripoli, which not sure why we're calling it Tripoli, but it's a horrible name. We need to change the name. But it's Chelsea three, Chelsea two. And one of the areas of concern, and this is something that, that I'm very concerned about, is a feedback loop that I'm getting is that we're, what we're really doing and is building or we're, we're in some way disqualifying or not allowing for a certain type of community member from, from being able to find affordable housing. In other words, we're building nothing but affordable housing for farm workers. And, and part of what is occurring is the, the housing and funding a pie that we put together. The funding pie, and I'm not saying that we should stop, we should, we should continue, but we should, we should look to allow for non-farm worker housing to be affordable. So folks that work in, in the hospitality industry, folks that work in, you know, the construction industry. We're, we're, we're missing them right now. And I think it's the way we're going after the funding. We need to go after other types of funding that's not just Joe Serna that allows us to get some of that funding put together. And, and that's something that I think is very, very important. You know, there's a lot of people that are non-farm workers that are working in a lot of different sectors and they can't find housing. And so we, we really need to look at that funding pie, Selena, and, and try to encourage maybe the next three affordable housing developers to, to look at, you know, a funding pie is that will be more inclusive to other, other residents. I'll address the Grupo Firme and how it came about and, and, and maybe just shed light on everything, on all of this. For the last six years, the city of Coachella has been working to somehow bridge the gap between the Coachella Festival and the city of Coachella who that frankly has lent the name to Coachella. And if you look at what we've done, you have a bear on Avenue fifty-two, you have Ethereal on Avenue on Sixth Street. You have Los Tucanes who came a few years ago. You have now Grupo Firme who came in a few years ago. Or this year, the, the reason why we've done that is, is there is a a sense of looking into the show, if I can take from an artist here locally, where you have a lot of families and a lot of people who can't afford the, the, the ticket and are somehow saying, hey, we want to be part of this. We want to see some of it. A few months ago, when we were recognizing Todek and Las Monarcas as, as for their volunteer efforts and Luis Caigos was given the award of being the person of the year for the volunteer of the year for the fifty-sixth Assembly District. The Monarcas, they, they were, they were given a question and said, if there's anything that you could do or that we could do for you, what is it? And they said, look, we would love to go to the festival. And they said, look, we would love to go to the festival, we would love to see Grupo Fidme. And I talked to Luz at the time, and and we asked Luz Luz uh how many girls are there? Well, there's over a hundred and sixty girls. It's actually like two hundred girls. And to try to get tickets for a two hundred girls is very difficult, or two hundred members is very, very difficult. So what we decided is, well, why can't we bring a little bit of the festival to Coachella now? It is in my opinion that the city of Coachella needs to benefit from the festival. And I think in this case, we killed two birds with one stone. On one, on the one hand, we made some dreams come true for some young ladies for Todek and recognizing uh their efforts that they've that 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 have been gone, that have been happening there. Uh, as well as the Monarcas, the and and young men as well that are part of that, who have tirelessly you know, just given of their time and of their effort. Now, on the other hand, the keys of the city is an economic development tool. Uh, if you look at who the keys of the city have gone to, uh, they gone to Art of Bo, they gone to Brentwood. Uh, the keys have not, the the keys, because we have other mechanisms to recognize our citizens like the like the hometown hero wall, the volunteer of the year award, all the proclamations that we we give, like the key has traditionally been used as a way to bring in economic development and to attract and to bring some recognition to the city. I will tell you this, based off what I've seen on the analytics of that ceremony, uh, the city received one point eight million views uh in terms of of people that were finding out who the city of Coachella is, making a link to the festival, uh, recognizing the residents here and recognizing the stories of 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 where this community is and where it comes from. So it's an attraction tool. It's a, it's a mechanism in which we look at uh in insane, okay, how can we put Coachella on the map for being Coachella and and owning Coachella? Coachella is our name, and so that's why we did it. And uh and, you know, that's why why uh it is that, you know, we'll continue to do it. Now, the on the other side, if there is our folks that we wanna recognize, I I'm with council member Galarsa, let's bring them forward. Let's bring them forward. Um, let's, you know, we do hometown heroes. We have the city council dais where we can recognize folks and give them certificates. Uh, you know, but at the same time, I think for us, it's very important that we don't forget that we lend the name Coachella to the festival, and we somehow get something in return. And so that's why we did it, and I look at the analytics, it was a very nominal investment. I looked at the cost, the cost is like eight hundred bucks. Cause we, you know, we 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 have our own podiums, we have our own stage, we have our own uh, you know, little you know, security fence that we have, and staff was there and cost them a- any more time, a little bit of time, but it was about eight hundred bucks, took a thousand dollars in total to actually get some really, really good analytics for the city and at the same time, recognize a group of young uh individuals and folks that that frankly have just done a good job of of helping us during COVID, and I think uh are an extension of what we do uh as as a government. So that's why we did it. And with that, Mister City Manager, before yours.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just a few reminders that this Saturday is the day of the young child. You're at Veterans Park at nine o'clock. And on Sunday, we start Solcito Sundays here at Veterans Park as well. It's starting at six P M.
Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we return at seven fifty-four.